So I just wanted to, as Alicia said, we we wanted to take you through the Ontario system. So thank you for joining us. We'll try to maneuver through this government new tiering zoning. We've kind of been mixing the names of what we call it. And look into how that applies now to our volleyball community, what the other, what the stage two, stage three means. And you know, continue to see how we can keep volleyball rolling and playing in this difficult time. This is unfortunately our reality now of trying to decipher these regulations, translating it to our sport. And then there's even the additional layers of into your regions and local, your local public health and municipalities, what they do with it. So we'll look at that along with, as I said, those additional protective measures. We have some Q and A and then there's some future town halls coming up November 30th and into December. So. Um, I just wanted to start just by looking at. There's obviously more and more information as COVID has come along and looking at as we get more data of unfortunately where COVID transmits. It's, it does, it is very helpful though to look into because we can now target different activities, ways to mitigate risks. And so I just wanted to put this pie chart up here so we can really have a look at that. And then as we're talking about the different measures, you can kind of relate back to this pie chart and say, okay, this is why this measure is needed. This is, this is another way that we could mitigate with our team or within our club. So these are the, the main risk factors. Close contact is considered the highest risk. But obviously, if we want to play our sport, we know we have close contact. So other things, other ways to mitigate risk is there's prolonged exposure. So is there ways to limit the exposure time? Limiting figuring out ways to adjust the practice. So there's not as much exposure for the, for the athletes and that there's more times to physical distance. Obviously, closed spaces, crowded spaces, some facilities just might not be suitable to try to have your team in there to, to play. And then also, and obviously the forceful exhalation and let's keep our masks on. So one other piece with this is just remember all personal and for the public health measures for all zones is still the physical distancing, staying home when else. So that's why I always make sure that athletes are screening before they're arriving, athletes, coaches as well, frequent hand washing and surface cleaning. So those are, those are in place for all, obviously all the zones. So now that we have this framework, um, it's, it's nice to know now how the government is making decisions. I mean, obviously data is important and this is unfortunately a long haul. This is going to be in place now for quite some time. So I think it's great that we now can start to learn more about this framework, the zones, because we'll be, it is a matter of moving in and out of these zones. What does each zone mean? And obviously we all want to get to prevent, but that isn't the reality at this time. So just, um, that's their arrow of it always getting into prevent, but just keep in mind that regions will go back and forth in and out of these zones. So I'm not going to go into detail about lockdown level because that means nothing's happening in volleyball. So let's move into the other ones. The control level. So control level is our stage two. Alicia, if I mix up the stage two, stage three, please let me know because I've been going over these so many times. But stage two, so this is where a team sports was training only. So there's no games, no scrimmages. Physical distancing is required at all times. There is only 10 people indoors, 25 people outdoors. So this is, this is a real cutoff point, right? Where we know if you're, it, this is the old modified stage two. So red zone, control zone. This is training. Moving into our prevent, protect, restrict. The green, yellow and orange. Uh, this is returning to our stage three. So your gathering limits, you have your 50 people indoors, 100 people. Oh, sorry. I have a type one here. I meant to fix that 100 people outdoors. Sports can be played. If modified to avoid physical contact. So this is where volleyball has done that back in the other version that we had. The key difference in this regulation that was just released is the wording was actual, actually only team sport. And now it's actually sport. So other sports were really struggling with being able to, to participate or be able to have any activity. So that's the main wording. So that's why ours is very similar because we had the team sport in there. We were able to modify our play to avoid physical contact. And just keep in mind that the physical distancing can only be, be breached while the sport is being played. So if the athletes are not in action, they need to maintain their physical distance. Always look to ways to try to avoid a ways to like be able to physical distance when they're not in the activity and always avoid the physical contact. So we all know that this stuff is part of that is when they're cheering. So try to figure out other games and ways for them to cheer. And I'm sure they'll come up, they're very creative. So they can come up some with some other ways to cheer without coming together and you know, cheering, which is the part I know we love about our game is when the, the athletes are having so much fun and are excited. But they're just going to have to figure out another way to express it. Because that's actually probably the highest risk out of our entire play with the athletes. So the other piece that didn't change with this regulation is league is still limited to the 50 and you can't mix the league. Play. So you can have a league of 50 players, you can have another league of 50 players, do not have them play against each other. That would be against the government regulations. So this is in all of these zones, green, yellow and orange. These, these regulations apply. There are some further regulations that come in yellow and orange. So if you move out of green and you move into yellow and orange, if the team is going to be exercising as far as working out with weights or in an exercise area, the physical distance actually increases to three meters. So keep that in mind. Your team can come together. It's, it is also a smaller gathering size. But keep in mind that now the physical distance is actually three meters. And the other things are the same, just as in our return to play protocol, contact tracing required, safety plans required. For facilities, they will require the reservation, but you don't have to have each athlete do anything to set up the time. It's can be one per team. In another piece that they specifically state in the reg, in the government regulations is that there's no spectators when it's the orange zone. But at the same time, facilities will manage that part. There's really not room for, for spectators. So it's kind of a, not really a, a point that everyone's kind of just knows there's no spectators pretty much. So moving through return to play, um, we know that there's lots of factors that make the return to play protocols with the OVA. So I just reviewed the government regulation side and we see that for volleyball and for our sport, there isn't a lot of changes, just understanding that we now live in these zones and we move through these zones and we'll adapt our website to update those. So we have that. We know how to operate legally within the government regulations. Same with insurance. Insurance knows that we're operating legally. So we've reviewed that, that part as well. Volleyball Canada, we are well within their guidelines. We've also had extensive conversations with them about some of the different rules and regulations. The provinces stay in contact as far as what's happening in other provinces. So we are also following any volleyball Canada regulations that are required. So then we move to Ontario volleyball and we do have a few other measures along with what we just went through in the government regulations. Masks. So masks are required by all participants at all times. If necessary, and we do have a few, we have heard of some athletes needing exemptions. That is allowed. It's, it's, it's not an issue. But just a warning, just to the, the, obviously the coaches, the clubs. Just explain, explain to the other parents why some of them get a little worried about why is that athlete not wearing a mask? Is that going to put us at, you know, us at risk? So just share and communicate along those lines. As soon as an athlete's mask is damp, they do need to make sure they change it. That's when the bacteria can build up and some other things. And also the athletes need to be very careful not to touch their masks and then obviously play the volleyball. There's studies and information articles that are posted on the OVA website and the Coach Academy. There's also more in the works that are coming. So we're in, as I said, we're in close contact with volleyball Canada about getting further information about mask wearing with our athletes. But one of the ones that was most recently done was from the University of Saskatchewan and they did from, they did confirm that wearing a face mask during vigorous exercise had no detrimental effect on the blood or muscle, muscle oxygenation and the exercise performance. Just, it just as an aside from talking with volleyball Canada, all of our national team athletes are wearing them during training. They have had a case out in Richmond. We have multiple Canadian athletes out in pro leagues that they have had positive, they, they've had, they have had tested positive along with teammates and a lot of them. Their teams get shut down for weeks and they're, the Italian league is at risk of getting shut down entirely. So the, the face mask, wearing the face mask is definitely something that can really help to keep our sport going. We know that we need to play it in close proximity of others, but there is a way to mitigate the risk. The mask seems to be helping with that. We had a, we had a very recent incident in our own community where an asymptomatic athlete was playing, their team, their, their team scrimmaged against another team. All athletes wore masks. So this was actually even before this had become mandatory. We found out about this afterwards. A couple of days later, the athlete was positive. And of course they, they followed all the protocol. They screened. There was no symptoms. So everyone played. The local public health classified this as a casual interaction. Not a close contact. So the importance behind that is that all of other participants continue on. The athletes could go to school. They didn't have to self isolate. They were required to self monitor. So now you have an instance where, okay, we're aware, there was, there was an instance of, of COVID. They self monitor, but they can continue on going to school. But there turned out to be no other positive cases that came out of that. So obviously that was that was a, it was a good example to hear about. We know that's not always going to be necessarily the case, but definitely the masks do help to reduce the risk. Indoor friendlies. Um, another piece that Ontario volleyball has put in is that based on the government advice, as far as they're asking and their advice is to restrict non-essential travel from areas of high transmission to areas of low transmission. The OVA, the indoor friendlies, red zone participants won't be permitted to compete. In those, we will keep them to the green and yellow and orange zones. And obviously we understand that's a very tricky thing, but we'll learn more about these zones. We'll learn more about which of our teams are in and out of these zones and we'll work with us. But right now we do have to respect that the government's asking there to be a restriction on non-essential travel out of those high transmission areas. And that is what we thought was prudent to put in along with our rules for the indoor friendlies. So as we keep hammering through return to play protocols, there's more layers of measures that get added into this. So local public health authorities. Just as we've been saying from the beginning, you do have to be aware of what are the rules in your region? By your local public health, they may have further rules. They must obviously also be followed. And we're seeing more and more of that. We're seeing more where they're adding further measures. So keep that in mind. And facilities, the same things that you've been dealing with. Now, some facilities may have special plans approved by the government. So there is, there is possibility that they're able to operate a little different than those government regulations, but that would have to be on an approved plan. And that's something to also look into and find out what their rules are. And also our clubs. The clubs, club, executive club leaders. You know, there's, they're going to do the rules that make sense for their area. And I really commend all the clubs for trying to maneuver this and trying to figure out what works for your club. I mean, I mean, finding a facility is a struggle enough, but then to also operate with all of these rules. And to figure out how to support your coaches and your athletes to operate under this, it's not easy. As our staff continue, if you have questions, we continue to field them. And we try to move through this and, and keep volleyball going. So this is something that we're just on the overall, it's a lot to be, to get an understanding of the protocols. So just take the time to get knowledgeable on it, respectful of the protocols and operate as safe as you can.
Joe, sorry to cut in here. Speaking of questions and being knowledgeable, we have a lot of questions popping up. Can we address some of those right now versus waiting to the end? Some of them tie in. Already been discussing.
You go right ahead.
Oh, well, there we go. Okay. Do we have a good definition of what indoor is? Is it four walls? Is it a building? Is it a gym? Question for you. I know it's in terms of in facilities I've been speaking with, it really varies. So like Rim Park in Waterloo, we had a conversation last week and they have public health approvals where they have different arenas as one indoor facility, right? And then the field house, they have split into the three sections and the top is one section with allowed to have 50 people and the bottom section has 50 people. So realistically, it's, it comes down to what the facility is allowed. And as Joanna had mentioned previously, some of the facilities go through the government and actually get plans approved. So they can have more than like 10 or 50 people, depending on what tier they're in. In their facility. So it really does vary to vary. Joe, anything else to add to that?
No, that's exactly it. Is, is the facilities really run the show on that one? As far as they're taking all the liability upon how many they're letting in. So this is, this is the part where they'll have their special plan and follow their.
Perfect. Okay. Please define outside league play. There's a great deal of confusion surrounding what outside league play actually means.
So the government has not done a good job on defining that. So it's, it's based on, if you have a league with 50 participants in it, then that is one, really consider that as one, because they've been very clear with the number. You can have another league with another 50. But like this, this is where it's like they cannot, you cannot have a playoff where they come down to the end and then they play each other or that they mix in between. So run them as separate leagues. If you would like, if you want to have 50 athletes play and then they've played their number of games or however you've, you know, been able to do it. And then if you're going to want to change who those athletes play, make a different league, take a two week break. Take out that, take that washout period. This is, these are things that the, the washout period, none of that is defined in the regulations. But this is how the sports are managing it. And this is the recommendations that the, the sports have put into the, to the government. So then in order to change and play different teams, you take that two week break and then make your other group of, make another group of 50. Let them play for their four weeks or three weeks or however, however long that takes to play. Then take another two week break and change again. So that's just something to be cautious around of they're very clear with their number of 50. And that you can't play against another league that's, that has the 50 people. And that's just a clear regulation.
Perfect. And that was also discussed, Joe. I don't know if you want to touch on with the beach friendlies in the summertime when you were speaking with the public health units and that model.
Yeah. Well, we had the, the public, the beach friendlies. The also the indoor friendlies have been reviewed by some of the local public health. So just understanding, also, also I sorry to mention this, if any local public health have any questions for you, we're happy to help. We share the documents with them. We answer their questions. A lot of them, they just need to get a handle on our protocols. And we've had really positive feedback on our protocols. So if you're following them so far, our local, all the local public health have been good. I'm going to say good to one jigsaw now. But they have, have accepted them. So they do like the fact that we understand how our protocol ties back in with the government regulations. We can point right to the government regulations that we're following within our protocols. So that's where the gameplay can happen. Leagues are, leagues are, are, are different than just allowing gameplay to happen. But when you show them all the protocol that you're, you're having the screening, wearing masks, making sure that you're taking time in between. If you want to play another exhibition game against someone else, take, take time in between those games. And that's what the schedule that Carrie addresses in her indoor friendlies, along with what we did in the beach friendlies in the summer, we just spaced out when those ages would have been playing against each other to be able to show that there was a gap in time. Well, and the numbers, our numbers in total. Yeah.
Yes. Awesome. In terms of the league, just can you clarify some more around the number 50? Does that doesn't include 50 players or does this include the coaches as well as everyone supposed to be in that 50 number?
We will confirm for sure. I think it's 50 participants. It from my understanding of the regulation, it is the athlete.
Okay. We'll follow up on that one for sure. Scrimmage question. Can a team in an orange or yellow zone scrimmage amongst themselves? So club, like teams in their own clubs. Uh, yes, they can. That's a quick one.
Yeah. The only thing, just to layer that back in, some facilities aren't, don't want orange in if they're yellow. So you have to check with your facility. And it's just something to check on. So that's, um, again, there's different layers throughout and just, just ask the questions.
No, for sure. Um, actually kind of tying into this as well, like I know in past regulations with the government, parents were allowed for underage athletes. In the regulations now that they've updated, Joe, do you mind speaking to that a little bit? Are they still allowed in for all tiers or is something changed? Like with the road zones when spectators aren't allowed to kind of thing.
Yeah, they are. The parents are still allowed in. The issue is obviously just with capacity. So dealing with your teams and the ages of our athletes, just this is where the, the, the club and the coach will, will probably be asking you to look to not because the capacity can't hold all the athletes train and the parents. But look, the rule of twos, parent, a parent supervisor taking turns. Just other ways to do that, because if not, you're, they're going to have, these clubs are going to have to be asking athletes to not come and train. And right now this is all about maximizing, obviously our athletes being able to get into the gym and hopefully play the sport. But yes, they, they recognize that minors can have a parent or guardian there.
And that's as long as they're able to physically distance. I know that's right in the regulations as well, as long as the facility allows it. And if there's enough space for each to have a parent that can physically distance safely between athletes, coaches and the parents. So once again, really follow up with your facility on these ones. Okay. Is it recommended that players only train within their teams and avoid separate training with other organizations and players?
Well, that's a yes and a no. I know that sounds like a whoop, but that comes back to assessing your risk factors. So first off, what zone are you in? So looking at that, um, looking at what is the other team you're playing? Are they, are they, are they another similar zone? Are they making sure that, are you comfortable with, with how they follow the protocols? So this is the other thing of your parents might not be comfortable with you going and scrimmaging against someone else. So what's the comfort level of parents? And this actually comes back to this, this last slide that I do have open, bringing us back to our risk factors is assessing those factors. What is the facility that you're considering playing at? Is there enough space for two teams to be there? There may, it may not be, it may not be a, it might not even be the issue of playing. It may be where. So consider, consider all the factors and yes, they can, they can scrimmage.
Perfect. Team practice question. So if a team in an orange zone has a few players that live in the red zone, are those players still allowed to attend practice?
Yes. They are allowed to attend practice. This is where obviously they're asking, the government's asking people to limit their travel. Leave home for your, you know, for work, for your groceries. And then this is what I love and exercise. So this is the part where it's like, that is, that athlete has joined that team. They have put themselves into that cohort. They have, they, that's how they're mitigating their risks. They're training with that one group. So this is where it's, there's no, they're not breaking any regulation by going to train. But again, this is where we, we need everyone to take care of each other, right? So everyone be really aware of what the protocols are, wearing their masks. That is, some of those kids may even be an online, an online student, right? So they have, they may be very careful mitigating their risks. So yes, they can, they can train with your group and we ask that they really make sure that they stay with one group. This is what we've been saying from the beginning. Get the athletes in a group, keep them with that group, run all your protocols and let's keep volleyball going for those kids.
So to follow up with like the team practices, so in an instance where a team is from a red zone, but their facilities are in the orange zone, do they have to follow the red zone protocols when they're practicing or are they allowed to follow the orange zone protocols when they're at that facility in the orange zone?
We stop recording?
Nope.
You're, you can run by the facility. That's, that's technically the, the, the rule is, is what the facility allows in there you can do. So the facility may, the facility may ask you to have further restrictions. But if the facility allows you to practice, practice with the, with those government regulations, you're in there, you're in the technical orange zone location. And that's actually a good time to bring up also the fact that some facilities may have with their plans that the sport can happen. So find out from the facility what they allow and how they allow the sport to be practiced and played. Because some of them have set up that they can practice, right? Without following, they, they can follow the sport rules. So it's just something to check on. I, I don't, they could have put it in their, in their, in their special plan that's approved by the government. And I'm, I'm not sure.
Question about athletes who are participating in other sports and their training and playing with their other sport groups where they have games. Are they still allowed to play in OVA at the club level?
I would be concerned that I think there, I think there definitely needs to be some further follow-up on that sport and what protocols. Just overall, like from the, the, the club's perspective, you would want to know, there's no, there's no government regulation that they can't participate in another sport. But you definitely want to know, is it, is it run by a, another recognized provincial sport body? And as protocols followed? Like you don't want to put your entire team and club at risk by an athlete participating. I'm going to call, I'm going to use our road word in a rogue league, right? Because right now they, if they are playing in another sport, they do have to be diligent around following the no physical contact. So we have heard of, you know, other basketball or hockey leagues happening, but they're actually not following OVA or DOHF protocols because they can't actually be playing. So if they're appropriately following the rules, there's no issue, but I would definitely ask the questions because there are rogue leagues running.
Um, question about mask usage and athletes complaining about wearing them. Is there any concern about liability or health issues from the athletes if, or when they arise?
It's really concerning. Well, we're always concerned about our athletes. They're, the athletes, um, they may want to try different masks. They may want to try different options. But the liability question, I, I can't, I can't speak to the, to the liability of it. This is the mandate that we've been told to follow from the board. So that's how they're, they're looking at it from the standpoint of we would have more liability on the other side. So.
And I think Joanna, to correct me if I'm wrong, but if there are. And I think Joanna, correct me if I'm wrong, but if there are health issues with the athletes as well, there's are the exemptions, right? That they go through just at the club level and tell them. And as organizers from the OBA to the club level, we are not allowed for privacy issues to ask for proof of exemption. But if there is an issue with the athlete, just talk with the athlete and parents and come up with the best possible outcome and decision for that athlete at the club level.
Yeah, and, and that's it. Just like you said, Alicia, there, the exemptions there if need be. And I will, I will give a, just a, another quick story from the national team center. When the athletes started wearing their masks all the time, it did take a couple sessions for some of the athletes to just adapt to it. One of them even said, yeah, I had a bit of a headache. Another one said, oh, I, you know, I felt a little off, but by the next session they were fine. And it just, it just took some time to transition to it.
Oh, actually, this is a great question too, about the recreational versus the elite athletes and how the high performance athletes have exemptions from protocols that are with their government regulations. Jo, can you just speak a bit about the high performance athletes and what's the definition for volleyball in Ontario?
Yeah, so there's still been, trying to get the written definition is still kind of out in, out there. But how it's been explained to us is that it's athletes training for the, the next summer and or the winter Olympics. So it has to have an Olympic pathway. So that's where volleyball, that's going to be our national team athletes that will be considered the high performance athletes. So for example, when our beach national team athletes that are on the Olympic pathway, when they're training at Downs, even though it's a red zone, they can play a game. That's going to be the, the difference there. But as I said, volleyball Canada, all athletes are wearing masks. The high performance athlete is considered to be the athlete that is directly training for the next Olympics or involved in a qualification event for the Olympics.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, just some questions now around like scrimmages and gameplay and individual training based on the different zones and colors that we're in. So question about is scrimmaging different than, or is, assume a scrimmage is different than league play? Or should we only be scrimmaging with the same group of 50 people? I think you addressed that a little bit earlier, Jo, when saying you have your 50 that you can play with and have a washout period.
Yeah, but I think it's important to look to, so a scrimmage in a league is different. But I think it's, it's really important to look to the rules that are put in place and how you can apply it though as well. So with a scrimmage, like you don't want to play, you don't want to accumulate and just keep playing like and, and get over 50 athletes. You kind of want to, you want, you want to have those 50 athletes and then, okay, let's be reasonable. We're not supposed to be over 50 and intermingling. So let's take a break, train within our group and then switch to a different team. So that's kind of the, the, the concept of it's the scrimmage in the league is different, but still consider applying the rules reasonably in a way to help mitigate risks. Make sense?
Okay, and just to clarify, Rick's calling us out. So if a team is in the red zone and crosses regions to an orange zone for practice, can they ignore the red zone protocols and regulations? And there, are they allowed to follow the orange zone protocol?
No, what they can practice, they're going to the orange zone to practice, but we're not going to put them in against another team. So that, so, so I, and that, this is where I totally understand this dilemma. I mean, I know we have athletes from all different zones and all of our teams. And, and we want the kids to train, practice if we can get some games going. But we have to, we do have to look to these government regulations and say we shouldn't be tra, red zones should be traveling out to then mingle with other teams and players to play. So keep within your team and practice. And if you're, and if you, and if you're lucky to have a facility that's in the orange zone and the facility allows you to practice that way, I'm like, practice, follow the rules. But the only way will not put you in a competition against other zones.
Because that was another follow up question of can you have an internal scrimmage if you're in the red zone? So i.e. six on six wash drills. I know in the return to play protocols, Jo, for the red zone, modified stage two, it was four athletes per side, correct?
I don't know the athlete per side. I don't think we have an athlete per side. You have in stage two, you got to follow physical distance. You can't play game. So you can't do a gameplay drill. You have to do training drills and maintain physical distance. So I don't know how you could play a game.
Right. For sure. Should I see if I've missed anything else here? Oh, a question about 2021 options versus competition. So yeah, Matt, we're having the town hall session on November 30th with updates from OBA staff as well as the chairs from the IBDC. We will be on just talking about different modifications for January onwards. So there you go. Okay, if I missed any questions, please send it in the chat again very quickly. I think we got through all of them. And like I said, all of these will be posted in FAQ, hopefully by tomorrow or Wednesday, the very latest, depending on how quickly we can get these cleaned up and posted.
Give yourself. You can see if the chat, if there's anything else comes in. I just, I just brought back this risk factor slide. Just, just to remind us of, you can see where all the rules, the protocols, the regulations, they're all really looking to cover off these different risk factors. So there's always awareness that you'll need of the protocols. You can see why so many of the protocols are important to try to cover off these risk factors. But always assess your own risk and comfort level. And it's always your choice whether or not to participate. Consider, always consider further ways to mitigate risk. There may be things that, that haven't been thought about. And there can be further ways to help mitigate risks. So I want to, one of the things that Aurora Storm has done is they've put, what did they put in the, the material on the net? Vinyl to cover the net. So they created that themselves. I think it was sourced from Fabricland and they actually put a vinyl up over their net. So when they, the teams are practicing and they have one location where they practice spaced out during the day, they actually have vinyl on the net. So there's a, you know, just, just another mitigation way that was innovative to, to kind of keep, keep us going. So I mean, we have a really strong community and I mean, it's going to take a lot of innovation and a lot of diligence from all of us to kind of get through these protocols. But let's try to keep volleyball going. And this is a saying that Alicia picked up from her presentation from CIRK. We want to keep work going, we got to be comfortable with being uncomfortable. Because we're in this for the long haul. This is going to be quite some time before we're going to be able to operate as we did. So that's where I'm like, thank you and thanks for coming on and learning more because things change so quickly that we will keep updating you as we have more information and find out more protocols and unfortunately rules.
And we've had a few, sorry, Jo, we've had a few more questions pop up here as we're going. You still just really looking for clarity on the six athletes on the side of the court at a time as long as they're physically distanced? So yes, 100% for the green to orange zones. We're just going to follow back up with the red zone with the older regulations. I thought we had a max of eight athletes on there with four per side to allow for the physical distancing. So we will send out a communication just to really clarify everything. You know, we can probably get Dylan to get that out tomorrow, once we just look at that.
Yeah, I don't think we kept that number in inside. I think we just went with the physical distancing. Because I mean, the, the limits with zone too, you have 10. They, they kind of, they kind of control the limit with, by limiting the gathering size so much. So I don't think to be so specific with it. But again, this is where coaches, you know, they're getting really good at being innovative. There's drills and different ideas that have been posted on the Coach Academy that LP has put in there with the team and the other lots of coaches. So there's other adapted drills in there.
Yeah, and more questions around the game drills. Does it strictly refer to six on six or for doing a three on three versus four versus four? Can a game situation take place in the red zone?
Yeah, this is where if you're doing three on three backcourts, that's a great way to do a drill where the kids can stay physically distanced. And they can still get a bit of action in there. So there's ways to, you know, like we said, to, to adapt. But yeah, call it a wash drill. When the facility asks.
Yep, exactly. Okay, question about Ontario essential healthcare workers on the screening form. Can they coach and can their children play? Yes, I think, sorry Amanda, just to clarify, are you talking about the OBA screening questionnaire form? Is she saying it does not allow them? On the OBA, yes, they're allowed to coach.
That's, that's your baby, Alicia.
Yeah, no, they should be allowed to coach. There's the exemption there for if you're a healthcare worker. So there's a little exemption rule there. So yes, they're fine to coach and to play.
And just on that, we continuously update that to the ministry. So if we're missing something, always we're happy, let us know and then we update it.
Exactly, it does change quite frequently. And clarifying once again, red zone teams are not allowed to scrimmage with anyone else regardless of where they're playing. So yes, they, we don't want the red zone teams traveling out to scrimmage against other clubs. We want them sticking with their own cohort to limit the, be no potential transmission for COVID.
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. I think that's everything.
Okay.
And like Jo said, if there's any other questions, just email at us anytime or, you know, we're here to answer and try to make this a little more, you know, less murky for all of us as we're waiting through like the fog that we can't see to feet ahead of us. So yeah, we're here to assist wherever we can. So Jo, is there anything else for you?
No, I mean, if anyone thinks of questions, send them in. There's still a lot to work through. Obviously with this, with these new regulations and the formats and, and with more regions moving in and out of these zones. But again, we thank you, thank you for your time and thank you for continuing to try to keep the athletes active and our coaches and our clubs.
Oh, another question.
Okay.
Another one. Just regarding tournament dates and cost before the 30th. There will be information in terms of tournament dates. What we will have to be looking at is something completely different than what we've ever done before. We're not going to be looking at, I don't want to open a can of worms here, but in terms, we have to be able to do and deliver what we can within the regulations from the government. So the traditional nine teams on three courts obviously isn't allowed within the 50 max gathering size. So we're doing a lot of behind the scenes work right now with the committees to figure out what is the best way of what a modified season will look like for all of our members. So in terms of tournament dates, no, you won't get that on the 30th. But an estimated cost of what we're looking at, yes, hopefully.
Well, and to be honest, it's really, we're expecting that these government regulations are it. Like this is it, this is so, it really, it helps that the team can plan to this. It'll just, we just have to stay very flexible on, there's going to be creatures that move in and out of these zones. So Carrie and her team are really working hard to get those, what it'll look like for, it's that green, yellow, orange that can, that can play the game. What that, what that can look like, what that competition can look like. And then we just kind of have to get everyone out of the red and in there. And that's, that's, that's what they'll be working towards.
Okay, two more. Can you confirm 50 people, athletes plus coaches are just athletes? We will be getting back to you guys on that one. We just want to clarify some things with the regulations. Just because as Jo mentioned, things have changed and wording has changed. So I just want to, we'll put that out in their release tomorrow with some other of the questions we're following up on. And another question, Jo, going back to face masks. So if a large fraction of the team claims medical exemption for face masks, what's the advice for the club? They have to go with it because we can't request proof, basically.
Well, but then you could decide should that team operate?
Yeah.
Is there too much risk for the rest of the people? I mean, the ones wearing masks, there, there's still a protection level for them. But yeah, you have, you would have to decide. I don't, I don't have, obviously this is something new. And we'd happy, happy to further discuss and send in different scenarios. And we can even reach out to Global Canada and Carrie McDonald's a great resource for us. He provides us a lot of the information and that he's following up. And he's staying in touch with the medical professionals that are helping with sport.
Perfect, okay, great, thank you. All right, everyone, I think that is all for this evening. We've gotten through all of those questions. So thanks so much for taking the time out to meet with us. And if you have anything else, please let us know. Otherwise, have a great evening. Keep on doing what you're doing and being awesome out there and delivering sport for the athletes. I know it's making a lot of people be very happy to be on the court, even though we're extremely modified. So let's keep doing what we love. So have a great night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it. Good night.